Five thirty, we're gonna call this committee of the whole meeting to order. And can I get a roll call, Jesse?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Okay, and can I, um, moving on to, um, item C, can I get in a motion to approve the agenda?
Go move.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes, and we will move on to item two, presentations, and be item A, student and staff community recognition. And can I have, um, Josh Fiesel, Angela Rue, please?
Angela did a tremendous job of organizing and leading our initial summer school session during June. The summer school experience for students and staff was positive and fun-filled due to Angela's leadership. Angela demonstrated through planning, communication, and problem-solving skills along the way to make the experience and opportunities afforded to our students a great one. We are fortunate to have Angela playing an important role in our program of activities for S A S D students. Way to go, Angela. Thank you very much.
Okay, and, um, moving on to item B, the referendum project update, um, that was in your, um, board docs, and, um, did everyone have a chance to review that? Any questions on that at all? Okay, if there's no questions, we can just receive and place that information on file. And then, moving on to item C, strategic planning, and we have a presentation today from Mr. Stramberg.
Out if you would?
Yep.
You?
Are you sure, Madam President, that I would not be here for more than eighty-seven minutes? So, rest assured, I'm gonna talk shorter than... I think she fell over when I said that.
I think I did.
You can understand why. Um, so, my name is Kevin Stramberg, I'm with Stramberg &amp; Associates. I'm familiar with the great majority of you. I've been working with the district for a number of years. It's so interesting, as we complete one strategic plan, to be thinking about starting a second, and to think where the district was at the point in time that we were talking about the first plan that I was working from. Dr. Aslan and I were reviewing some of the pieces that were, if we want to build the district for 2024, what would it look like? And so many of those things have already been accomplished. We were also saying, in that discussion, they've been accomplished in very different ways than we thought that they would be, but they're definitely moving in the right direction. So congratulations on the work, not only by you, but also by your staff and by your community. You've done a tremendous job of taking strategic planning to be a real practical sort of way of moving the district forward, so congratulations on that. So, let's talk a little bit about the plan for the future. You have a timeframe in front of you. It is a fairly condensed timeframe, because we are looking at a couple new approaches in relationship, especially to the research portion of the work. So much of the work being done in the past and with other districts has been through focus groups, and inviting people to come in and have discussions about what's happening in relationship to the district. We found it in this district, but I've also found it in a number of other districts and other groups that I've worked with, that inviting people in gets a very small crowd. And we found that surveying key stakeholder groups is a much more effective way than conducting focus groups. So our plan is to look at a community surveying process that hopefully will get more involvement from a greater variety of people and a greater number of people. That process has been working much better with other groups and with other districts. So, because of that, we believe that we can shorten the timeframe of the overall plan and how we look at the plan. Even though we are already halfway through this calendar year, I believe that we can very effectively get this plan completed by November, December at the latest, so that implementation can happen in 2024. I will, um, open up any questions that you have in relationship to this timeframe, but it, it's a fairly straightforward approach, of course. We're gonna start with some work done by the board, including mission, vision, values, review of those, looking at the strengths and the weaknesses related to the district, again, work done by the Board of Directors. But parallel while that's going on, Dr. Aslan and I and other administrators will be doing some of the research portions of the work, looking at projections for class sizes, graduation sizes, going on for the next five to seven years, looking at where the large class numbers are and where the lower-class numbers are, because that makes a difference in relationship to your FTEs and where you need to put your resources. Also, we'll be looking at, um, trends in education, and especially because of the work being done by our legislature this year, the information changes almost on an hourly basis as to what it looks like for a district. But we'll be looking at those educational trends. Dr. Aslan and I have already done some background work related to that, but that's an important piece of looking forward. What I can tell you is that, um, Dr. Aslan does a really good job of looking forward and thinking, where is education going to be five to ten years from now? That's a key to strategic planning. We can't just look at today. We need to look at what we believe is gonna be happening five to ten years from now. So, those are the kinds of things that will be happening, parallel to the work, as well as getting information from the surveying process. Dr. Aslan and I have talked about whether we would actually be doing face-to-face, um, information sessions with staff. I think that's yet to be determined. That would happen early in the fall. That would give us enough time yet to be able to incorporate that information into the plan, and that we would probably be establishing that, those strategic priorities, and finishing up the strategic plan October, November timeframe. And then, talk about the implementation plan. It's really important, not just to build a plan and put it on the shelf, but being able to make the plan a real practical sort of way that's reviewed on a regular basis. It's the way that you have made great improvements for your district is by using it in a real practical sort of way, and also use it as the guideposts for administrators in the work that they do. Um, I have provided Dr. Aslan with a letter of agreement. That includes the same sorts of major milestones that are included on this sheet. And, uh, you should be really happy to know that actually, not everything goes up as far as price. I'm looking at a twenty-five percent decrease than the plan five years ago, and there are two reasons for that. The first is, um, that we are looking at ways of surveying that are much easier than me coming down here, spending two or three hours, and then analyzing the information. I can do the analyzing from home when we're doing surveying. But second of all, it's also because I know who you are, and I know how the district will use this information to move forward. So, um, we're looking at a price, the last time, of about twelve thousand dollars. This contract looks at nine thousand rather than twelve thousand. So, hopefully, you're pleased with that discount, and, and we know that it isn't, uh, less of a product, it's just less of a price to get the product. So, I'm open to any questions. I'm open to any ideas or relationship to the timeframe. Uh, Dr. Aslan, do you have anything else to add in relationship with the process?
No, nothing to add at this point.
Okay. My plan is that we'll start this process even at the next board meeting in, in August, I think, 'cause August seventh is the next.
The August committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions at all? At this time? Nope? Alright.
Eighty-seven minutes, done.
Perfect.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and so, thank you again. And moving on to item, um, D, um, to discuss the Health Office Annual Report, and we have, um, Nurse Leah Foley here. If anyone has any questions, everyone had a chance to review that. Um, the information was in board docs, so if we have any questions, we can open that up to her right now. Any questions about any of that? I mean, that's all I think we need. We just wanna say thank you again for putting that all together for us.
Of course.
And we greatly appreciate your effort for that. Thank you.
Yeah?
Okay, we're just gonna receive that information and place it on file. Thank you. Alright, moving on to item E, discuss Wisconsin Air Scholastic Athletic Association Membership Renewal. Dr. Aslan?
So, it's that time of year again, we come forward with the W I A A renewal application. As you can see, they continue to not charge a fee for membership, and, uh, you can see the matrix of what our, uh, our, our sports would be for, uh, boys and for girls for this upcoming year.
Anyone had any, um, questions for Dr. Aslan at this time? Yes, Paul?
Hockey shows that we have a call.
The girls.
Oh, none. The girls are?
Girls. Girls are.
Remind, okay, I didn't realize there's...
And we're, we're good on that then? Okay, alright, so we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to item F, and discuss the twenty-three, twenty-four academic standards. Dr. Aslan?
Part of the annual notices to families is what our academic standards are used in the school district, and as, uh, as was in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our standards in the core area are mathematics, district standards, English Language Arts, district standards, science, district standards, and social studies, district standards.
Anyone have any questions right now for Dr. Aslan? No? Okay, we have consensus to move that to the regular meeting as well? Okay. Alright, moving on to item G, discuss the first reading of volume thirty-two, number one, Neola Policy Updates, Group Two. And, uh, does anyone have any... This is for the first reading. Is anyone have any questions at all? Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some questions and would like to look a little more at policy fifty-four-ten on promotion and retention. Beyond that, I would support moving the other policies forward with the first reading. So, the, my concerns are the, kind of the cut-and-dry listing of, of a student shall be promoted based on a score basic above or above on a local or state assessment, and then there's B and C. I would... I, I believe research supports that we need to move very cautiously with retention, that, um, research does not support positive effects of, of retention, generally negative effects of student retention. And so I think, um, I like the inclusion of the recommendation of the Student Intervention Team. It should clearly be a process that involves teachers, parents, and a student intervention team to make those decisions, not simply based on a, an assessment. I'm thinking the wording could be changed to be, rather than "shall", that it would include, we could consider these three items for promotion, making the decision. But the way I read it, I would be concerned that the policy says all of these things have to happen in order for a student to be promoted, and I don't think that is in the best interest of students or the district.
Okay, does anyone have any, um... I agree with Marsha, I think that this, I would like to have this reworded a little bit to not have to be required for some of those. Does anyone else have any other discussion on this at all? We could remove this one and have it reworded and take it out of this grouping for next week.
I, I'm in agreement, in part, the rea, one of the reasons I'm gonna say is that, of all the students that are in their buildings, I don't think anyone knows where other students are at any time regarding their credits, where they're at in their education, so to... Or it would just be a public knowledge that this person was held back? Or how, how do you go about keeping the student in school if you're gonna be holding them back? And it comes back to what Marsha is saying, is what's best for the student emotionally for learning. Is that what we're seeing here? Is that we're gonna hold them back and publicly announce they're being held back in tenth grade again?
Student said, "Do not meet the criteria, will not be promoted to fifth or eighth grade", is what the policy states as written.
Or whatever they're, you know, that's kinda where I'm at, is that the kids that were in grade last year realized that we missed one and somebody else earned one.
Don't you run into problems if you promote a student who's, who is not ready? You, you are, I mean, when we have all those standards, you're asking for trouble. So, I'm not understanding i-if a child has not achieved or is able to achieve at that moment those standards, we set them up for failure in other ways, going by promoting them when they haven't successfully achieved those standards.
I guess we got two different views, and that's for sure.
Well, the decision, as I said, should be not based on one of these three items that are listed. It should be based on the totality of, of the student's progress, all the information that we have, and through lots of work with the teacher, the student assess, uh, Student Intervention Team, family, student. A state assessment is a one-time picture of that student's progress on that particular day. They may or may not perform well, it may not be a good, um, indicator of the student's understanding of the concepts.
I agree with Marsha. I think this, the snapshot that some of those students, they may maybe not be a good tester, it may be a lot of issues, there may be a lot of factors, so saying it's required. I think that there should be another layer to this, not saying that we aren't going to hold someone back, but I think there needs to be some other measures of it just then, though.
I, I guess I just disagree.
So... And we've seen... Can I ask a question? So, I'm just gonna go by reference from when my kids were in school. So, when it was decided in elementary school if they should be held back or not, it was decided with me. It wasn't decided on a test that they took or anything. It was total stuff. So, if that's not what this says, that is what they're doing, I believe, because that's what happened with two of my children.
And that's what concerns me about this policy, that, I, the way I read it is that it locks us into the student must do A, B, and C, or they will not be promoted. And as you said, it's a...
It's tota...
Big-picture decision.
It's a big decision, and it should be...
That includes...
It's everything that's included. And you should include the fam, I mean, parents to determine if, and have everything. And the parents should know if they're doing well or not doing well anyway, from the beginning of...
There's been a lot of research on retention, and, um, it is, it doesn't support success for students. In fact, it's generally negative that students who are retained.
I can tell you, both my children were, were kept in the same class two years in a row. And they did way better that way.
Yeah, so it should, has to be an individual decision, certainly not based on one individual assessment. So I would like to come back to this policy. As you said, um, we want it to be what we're actually doing in the schools, not a policy struggle to follow. We want it to be what's best for students. As it reads, I don't think it looks...
So, um, would we be in agreement to see a revision of this portion?
Can I, can I ask? Can I ask if maybe one of the administration people could talk to us about this, as to why it's in front of us and what brought us to this point? I think that we're, as a board members, we're all making decisions, but we don't understand what brought it...
Sure. So there's been some, some change in state rules about, um, about how districts inform students and families about promotion and placement, and along with that, you know, the potential for retention. So, um, you know, as with all the Neola policies, you, you get some, some draft language. These items for promotion are pieces that the administrative team had, had worked on, and also with all the Neola policies, what, what you will approve in the end is what will go in the policy book. So, um, that, I don't know if that's giving you enough background information, but that's how it comes in front of you, and that's the work that had occurred on this draft to date.
Because what I, what I hear Marsha saying, and I think I agree with, is the lines that have been crossed off is the one that I wanted left in. And that would resolve the whole thing. It puts it back on, we have the ability to make an objective decision. What you've done is, that line being crossed off took that away from us. The only thing.
Correct me up.
Mr. Scherz, did you have something to add?
Couple of things that I'd like to say regarding what we're talking about here. A lot of times, the picture that we see from, not necessarily those that are in the educational system, are different than what we see in the buildings we're in. Now, some of the things that we've done here, example, high school, of trying to get students to, uh, to support them in areas of their weakness. And we've created courses that support them in that process. K-12, we've been working on, working on that really hard. And again, as a result, we've seen great improvement, okay? Not all, every ti, every time that you see data, it doesn't indicate all the steps that we've taken to get to that point. Mr. Stramberg was here mentioning the fact, if you go back five years ago, six years ago where we are and where we are today, we're in pretty good shape relative to where we were headed at that point. I also want to use an example, um, I have experience with this. Uh, I was assistant superintendent in a school district in Nevada that required all high school students to pass certain proficiency tests. The graduation rate was somewhere around sixty percent. So I want you to think about and be very cautious about the fact that, well, you know, I'm, I'm hearing this through the legislature, that this is the way to go, because sometimes things are, are, you know, they, we, we don't move in a steady line, we move in these kind of knee-jerk reactions. And again, what we need to do, a-as far as I'm concerned, is every student has a different story. And that story counts in how we develop their educational process. And if we group them all into the same category, we're making a mistake, because they, again, we're, we're talking about a district that has a fifty-plus poverty rate. Every one of my students, I can tell you, has a different story. And we need to work with them and give them the skills they need to be successful as adults. If we pin ourselves to standardized tests and things that don't necessarily reflect the learning that has taken place, we're making a mistake. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
I only wanted to ask if what Marsha was alluding to and others here was just that there needs to be a comment in here, someplace of parent involvement, but maybe that wasn't, or maybe it was what, um, Michelle was bringing up on the end.
I just think it's all of it.
Okay.
It shouldn't just be one aspect. They have to do all of this. I think it is in reality of how a student is. Cause they're right, one student can't take a test, and maybe that doesn't mean they're stupid, that just means they can't test. So, it has to be based on how that student is throughout the whole year before you determine how they move forward, not just by one test.
Yes, keep in mind that not all assessments are fair. Sometimes it's determined later on that the assessment wasn't fair. And now, that can cost you a year. I saw kids not graduate from high school quickly as a result of one assessment.
Should, should we leave our policy in place like it was before this change, then? Do we even have to bother with the change?
You'll, you'll have to, have to add some additional information, and that's, yeah, that's based on a change of state rules. I, you know, just a, a couple of insights, because we've, we've focused our discussion here this evening pretty heavily on page two, and I'd take you to the bottom of page one, you know, where we talk about, uh, guidelines for promotion, placement, and retention that, um, require recommendations from staff members, and those are, those are the folks that are gonna be working with those students day in and day out. The parent piece, uh, continues to be an important component, and, um, making sure that, that we've done that work on the front end to remediate whatever, whatever students are, are, uh, were, you know, have in terms of challenges, so... Yeah. So some of those pieces that have come up in this conversation are in the draft.
It's, yeah, they're there. Wait, it should be. The wording of "shall" and then the three items listed without any "or", perhaps, or as a totality of that, um, data and information on the student is kinda what concerns me. It, the way I read it, it could be interpreted as the student must demonstrate all three of those things, and then the bottom line, students that do not meet the criteria will not be promoted. So it doesn't, I would like to see the district have that ability to consider all of those pieces and make the best decision for each student.
So I'd, I'd ask the board, is that, is there consensus that that's, that would be the part of the policy if the board saw moves here this evening to, to table this, that that would be the area to focus, uh, whatever recommended revisions would be keyed on?
Okay.
Yeah.
So we would have consensus to move forward with all, excluding the fifty-four-ten, and then we'll come back with some rewording possibly? Would we be in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's a yes from?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. We will move forward with everything for the volume thirty-two, number one, excluding the fifty-four-ten for group two. Alright. And moving on to item H, discuss second reading of volume thirty-two, number one, Neola Policy Updates, Group One, for the second reading. Do we have any questions or discussion with any of those? We have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting? Yes, a, yes, consensus? Okay. And, let's see. Item I, um, discuss the second reading of the Student Handbook Updates. Um, there were no changes. Do, do we have any discussion about any of that? You consensus to move that to the regular board meeting? Okay. And, alright, item J, um, discuss phone internet services, Mr. Miller. This information we had in our...
So, uh, it was eighty-seven minutes for the previous presenter, I'll only take seventy-eight.
Perfect.
What you have in front of you is, we have a number of, uh, phone data circuits that we use for a variety of things. Obviously, our primary phone connection for all the phones, offices, classrooms, and that. We have secondary lines that we use for faxing, the fire alarm systems, elevator system that are traditional phone lines. Then we have a backup internet connection to our primary one that serves in case things fail, or during the regular day as our guest wifi, which keeps people connecting to get internet access when they're in the district as a guest, but not connecting into our regular school network. So, what has happened here in the last few years, and specifically in the last couple months, is another provider has coming into the area that, uh, entities within the Spooner area in Washburn County are working closely to expand broadband and phone service across Washburn County. And they now have the ability to offer a type of circuit that is better than what we've had existing, that will actually save some money and provide more flexibility in terms of how we connect our phones to make phone calls and that. Additionally, they also provide, uh, internet service that will allow us to have a much faster backup connection for comparable rates. So what I'm just bringing you is information about, basically, it's two different types of connections, without going into detail how they actually work, but, uh, um, what I wanna do is I wanna switch providers, is what the whole memo comes down to. And this is done on a month-to-month contract, so we're not entering into long-term contracts. So, our intent, obviously, is to work with them for, you know, as long as it makes sense, but, uh, if things don't work well, we can always revert, but that won't be the case here, because we wouldn't be switching. We didn't feel it was gonna be a best...
that won't be the case here because we wouldn't be switching if we didn't feel it was gonna be a better solution. So I'm just hoping to get the board's approval to work with, uh, Mosaic Telecom to set up a new connection for our phones and internet services here that are listed in there. Now, if there's specific questions about that, uh, the big thing is that it's a better way to connect, but it also has potential to save some money because you're not tied into having a set number of incoming and outgoing phone lines. The new system allows you to be more flexible of you use what you need. So we're starting out with a certain number of ability to make up to 23 calls simultaneously, and if we see we're only making like 18 at our biggest point, then we can scale things up or down. Where in the current system, you're locked into 24. And then you go up, you have to get another 24 and you don't go down. So that's why there's potential to maybe lower that cost, even lower than what's on the paper, what the cost is, which is cheaper than what we're currently paying, so.
So, is there any questions at all? For, uh, Mr. Miller? Okay. I heard three key things, saving money, not locked into a contract, and better service. That sounds great. Okay, so we have consensus to move that to the regular board?
Yes.
All right. Item K, discuss CISA 10 library media services proposal. Mr. Miller again, sorry, you're up again.
So, with our library media program, we need to have some services that would be provided by somebody that holds a license for the library media specialist license in the state of Wisconsin. Primarily to oversee the purchases of books and library ma- library-related purchases that are covered by common school funds. And we have tried various ways to put that service in place and, uh, what we're looking here is kind of our last option of contracting with CISA 10 for a number of days to provide that person with that licensure to, uh, basically review our purchases of books, one to make sure they're in compliance with common school fund purchasing and making sure that we are, you know, staying true to our mission of providing a diverse collection that also, you know, is appropriate for the readers in our buildings in our school and that kinda thing. So what you see in front of you is that agreement to purchase a number of days for that person to work with our pair professionals in each of the building library media centers for this year to, uh, you know, oversee that process. Questions, I guess?
Anyone have any questions?
The service fee of 7,500, is that, um, minimum or is it maximum?
That is for the specific 15, 15 days throughout the school year for that contracted service and, uh, basically what you're buying into when you buy a ser- CISA services, you get the person, the service they provide, plus all the overhead and expense that that organization incurs to have that person hired, and that's why the number is what it is. But I also will say too that when we looked into this, uh, we worked with both CISA 10 and 11 and, uh, finding somebody that holds that license in this area, uh, that's not an emergency license or looking to get that licensure is not an easy thing to do and, uh, it, the people are just not out there where we'd like it to be.
What do we do in the past?
Well, we'd had a library media specialist. That person moved into a different capacity. Uh, we contracted with somebody that had that licensure last year as an independent contractor. That person, um, has just decided to basically retire permanently. And so in looking at other options here of how we can fill this to, you know, meet the letter of the law, but also provide appropriate, meaningful service here. This is, uh, I guess basically the best that we can come up with to work within the budgets that we have to work with. The idea of hopefully restoring that position here, you know, in the future to, you know, a library media person that would work in our entire district full-time at some point.
Uh, budget, done?
It is above our budget right now, yes.
Other questions?
When did this requirement start within school district? Always been.
State of Wisconsin because you have common school funding with stipulations, and DPI has built on that, that you need to have somebody either serving in that capacity or providing that service, particularly when it comes to especially the common school funds or providing library media instruction, depending on what level or of education or how that instruction is happening within the building media center.
Thank you.
We have any other questions?
So last year was independent contractor?
Yeah.
So for our, but, I mean, does it exceed our budget by like the whole amount or, I mean, just from having that from last year to this year?
Right, so hiring someone full-time this year would not have been within the scope of what our budget would allow for. Right, so I, uh, so this, this figure as proposed is a lesser figure, uh, in fewer days than we had.
Thank you.
So this amount is in, within our budget?
Last year's budget.
Right. I, I can't answer that question. I can, I can find out and get back to you with it, but I don't have it. Do you know it?
I, I can give you a reasonably accurate, I believe it was more, but we also had that person doing more things over and above what this contract entails, and primarily that was working in the elementary school where we provide direct instruction, library media center, and we have a different solution in place for that. But a long-term goal of coming back to having a qualified licensed library media specialist to work with all these buildings to, you know, provide a good service for our district.
Okay. Um, do, go ahead, you, you had a question?
I do, but I don't know if it's gonna make sense because I'm just trying to process, but I think you, um, you two down there were touching on this already, so we moved positions around and don't have the specialist, but we're saving in some, but this is actually going to be more. So is it, um, you know, to the overall, to the overall budget comparing last year to this year add a specialist and the, or the other contractor? Is it neutral or are we still higher than? I can try to rephrase, but I, there's like five people that I think have moved around.
We'd spend less on this service in, in this current year that we just started than we spent last year. The stats said the amount of days and the scope of the work would be more narrow than the contractor we had last year.
So that's exactly.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, as best as I can answer it, so it's, our question.
Well, let me ask, if we don't do this, what happens?
Then you'd have to worry about being in compliance for common school funding for one. This is a type of person too, that if somebody ever does something like challenge materials that are in our media center, they will work with us with that in agreement to go through what our policies are of how you, you know, make a challenge as far as materials that are in your buildings, that kinda thing, and help guide the process of working that if it were to happen as an example. But at the same time, it's having somebody there that will work with our pair professionals or people that don't necessarily have the train to say, you know, is this truly the book I wanna put in my elementary media center versus me, middle or high school? And, you know, kinda be a final stamp of approval to, you know, green light purchasing a book or a resource to go into those buildings. And that, so it's like a final level of check and approval, and then we have reporting that we turn to the state that says, you know, we are providing that service with appropriately licensed person. And we do receive a significant amount of funding with common school funds. This year was around $75,000. I can't say what it'll be for the next year, but in all my years that I've been here in the last 10, it has never been less than $50,000 in a school year that we received for common school funds, and I would expect it'll be somewhere between those two numbers we would give for the, you know, the coming school year to purchase library media resources.
Okay.
The only other thing that I was gonna ask was the date on there was June 2nd, and it said it was valid for 15 days. And I was just curious if that, um, actually still held or increased?
Working with other options, it didn't pan out right up to the very end, and so I did speak with our CISA 10 representative that said they would, you know, work with Dr. Asland to finalize an agreement once you guys given the approval to move ahead.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other discussion on this? Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes, I'd say that I'm glad to hear that. We hope to someday again have a true library media specialist within the district knowing
Wanna see that.
The great services and how that really helps promote student achievement, so. In the meantime, yes, I support.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, moving on to item L, the 3690D planning. Um, anyone have any questions on that? Or can, we will, if no questions, we will receive and place that on file. All right, item M, the financial update. Dr. Haslam?
Uh, financial update for the month of May 2023. Had income of We had expenditures of $1,501,892.91. And the balance on hand at the end of May was $4,903,085.42. Significant receipts during May were the reimbursement for the SRR2 and the SRR3 grants. Uh, to contrast that ending figure with, uh, May of 2022, uh, on-hand balance was
Okay, any questions at all? Okay, receive that information and place it on file. And moving on to item N, approval of the vouchers. Um, do we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then section three, um, I need a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851(c) to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises, but do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, closed session. All right. Ready? Okay, we're gonna reconvene into.
Okay, we are now into open session. The time now is 6:50. We, uh, went into closed session. We had no action, and we're now into open session.
Kind of a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.